Is Monday, October 20th, 2025. Thank you all for being here. It's 5:00 PM. We have presentations this evening. It's always nice to hear from our community partners and the good work they're doing in the community. So I'm excited to hear these presentations. Always one of my favorite meetings to get updates. So we'll start with Grow Quad Cities. And for that, we welcome Julie Forsythe, the Chief Economic Development Officer of Grow Quad Cities, and Chris Caves, also with Grow Quad Cities. And I'm sorry, but I don't know your title, Chris.
Vice President of Business Retention, Expansion, and Workforce.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Ladies, you have the floor. We appreciate you being here.
All right. Thank you. Good to see you all again. Just to kind of set the stage for our conversation, and just as a kind of friendly reminder, so we have a service level agreement for the city of Bettendorf is one of our public sector partners for Grow Quad Cities Economic Development Services. And this diagram shows the larger chamber organization and all the other organizations that make up the greater Quad Cities Chamber. So for the benefit of the discussion today and activity, the work that we'll be talking about are part of Grow Quad Cities. And so those major areas of work would be business development, workforce, and quality of place development. So what's new since July 1st? So Grow Quad Cities has launched. We talked about that a little bit last year or last update, and certainly you've probably seen it in the news. Our Board of Directors has formed and has been meeting monthly. We are continuing to have private sector investment discussions. It's a public-private partnership, and so funds that support the work that we do to match the investment that you provide comes from private sector. So we continue to have those conversations. And then also, we've got some grant requests out there that have been submitted and presented, and awaiting to hear word on those. Our Board of Directors, these are our private sector board members. So some of these names may be familiar to you. And then also, we've got our public sector board members as well. And then, this is how we're doing in terms of fundraising. You can see the different levels of investment, and the folks underneath that have committed to support the work that we do. So you can see some logos there, some organizations that are known to you. And then, again, what is it that we're doing? We're doing the business development, workforce development, quality of place development, and regional marketing. And so this schematic shows, so landing projects and that whole business development process is really a two- to six-year process. And there's the steps that are detailed there that really, it's a sales funnel, right? You got to have a lot of leads in the funnel to get some projects, whether those be expansion projects or those are business attraction projects. And so we've got the process down in terms of what it takes to have a successful project. And so what's new are these black circles at the top. So currently, we've done a lot of ag and food processing and manufacturing, the industrial lane. But the new lanes that our CEO Peter has talked about is riverfront development, the entertainment and mixed use, which also includes that sports marketing, and then aerospace, defense, HQ and office. So we are in the midst of identifying new targets, and then also identifying opportunities where the new targets will be, so that we can run after them through our marketing and our outreach efforts to expand into these new lines of work. Again, there's those sectors. And so this is our outreach schedule and some of the places that we've been, and upcoming events that we're going to for this outreach for prospects. The ones in blue are the ones that are related to our new lines of work specifically. So you can see that we're mixing it up, and we are headed in our new direction this year, our new charge for those larger quality of place opportunities. And then here's some evidence of that. Peter, on that trip to Japan, and then Tammy Petchi recently went to Chicago for the ICSC Midwest event, where she had the opportunity to talk to some developers there about Quad Cities, what we have to offer. And we put together some opportunity outlook promotional materials to showcase what those opportunities are in the region. As far as regional marketing, our new website is, development is underway. Our RFI proposals will be rebranded, and we'll have content updates. An invitation to you all to follow Grow Quad Cities on LinkedIn if you are on LinkedIn yourself. And then our site selector news, that's something we send out on a regular basis. That was rebranded, and that went out about two weeks ago with news of the region. And quality of place development. So this is something that we work closely with Jeff Ryder on in identifying that, getting our, as I said, our opportunity outlook, marketing, prime development promotional tools ready. And so just some examples of what we're showing and talking to those developers about. They're very interested in the data and the trade profile of the region. And we have a business intelligence and economist on our team who's able to get that information. So these folks are able to make decisions and understand what the opportunity is here based on data, and how we can showcase the assets and opportunities that we have. So good stuff here. It's exciting to work on this. And then, the last pillar is workforce development. That is something we've been in the workforce and talent space through the Quad Cities Chamber that formally came over to Grow Quad Cities as a part of our work. Something that we're doing is we are, we're not trying to name the problem still. That's something that has been, in terms of workforce, that's been researched and named with Activity and Solutions through the Thrive Quad Cities Report. It was a regional workforce assessment that was the Illinois Higher Board of Education commissioned, and it was done for the entire Quad Cities region, not just the Illinois Quad Cities region. And they had tactics and items that we could take action on to move our region forward in terms of filling the talent pipeline. So Chris is going to talk more about these, but one of them is putting together Career Link QC. It's a web-based platform that connects students and schools to work-based learning opportunities. That's in development. We've got the Top 100 High-Priority Jobs Report that Chris is going to talk about. And then, of course, continuing to partner with higher education to develop training programs. Another example of that, or an example of that would be the Federation for Advanced Manufacturing Education has an employer-led public-private partnership, which is specific to training and maintenance mechanics. And so that is a profession that is in the Top 100 High-Priority Jobs Report. That's all about getting the future workforce ready for jobs that are going to be needed by our employers in this region. And then, of course, we are known for being a convener, a collaborator, getting folks together to understand what is, what needs to be done, and bringing those partners in. And so we will continue to increase those connections with the employer and education community. So from there, I want to let Chris take it from here and talk to you all about the Top 100 High-Priority Jobs Report. Okay?
All right. Thanks, everybody. Again, Chris Caves, happy to be here. So you need unique experience for me. So pulling up that up. I'll lay some groundwork real quick, just for the sake of the room. I do serve as Vice President of Business Retention, Expansion, and Workforce. So I take care of existing companies. In the last four and a half years that I've been with the Chamber, that's been primarily manufacturing. So please follow me on LinkedIn if you would like to know any and all activity concerning local manufacturing. I'll keep you in the know about all of that. I also have been a workforce development practitioner for 25 years. So I've worked for the State of Texas Workforce System. I've worked for Iowa Works. I've worked for Eastern Iowa Community Colleges, Black Hawk Community Colleges, all in a workforce capacity. I serve on the State of Illinois Workforce Board. I chair the Illinois Local Workforce Board in Rock Island, and I'm on your business committee for the Iowa Workforce Board. And that's because I live across the river. So that's Chris Caves in a nutshell. Let's talk about this report. This has been kind of fun, and a labor love, actually, over the summer. So it all started off, the genesis of this story, in 2023. As Julie mentioned, Illinois Board of Higher Ed completed a workforce study called Thrive QC. I was invited to be on that advisory council. Again, it's a six-county report, Illinois and Iowa. But they did a great job, and they had some really great recommendations. We were just about to start to actionize some of those recommendations, and United Way came to us, and they said, hey, we'd like to do a workforce study. And I was like, why? You know, let's, let's take a look at this Thrive QC report and see, right? Can't we just use this without spending unnecessary funds? It's a great report. United Way's priority said, hey, what we want to know is, you know, not only what does a labor study in the region look like, but we really do want to put a spotlight on jobs that pay livable wages, right? Let's, let's start to build out a blueprint for Quad Citizens to be able to look at data and go, hey, what, what jobs can I pursue? The education and training to get that work that's going to pay a livable wage. So that was a great factor to include. And as Julie mentioned, our economist, Bill Polly, said, hey, you know what? I can do that work. We've got the software. We've got the know-how. And he was able to pull together the data that actually created the Grow Quad Cities Report that you have in front of you. So sorry, only brought enough copies for council members. My apologies. So that is the Top 100 High-Priority Jobs Report. What we did then, well, let me just say, we want to, out of this report, I identified those jobs that we want to put, we want to put a spotlight on. But we also want to go back to the Thrive QC Report and actionize some of the recommendations there. A couple of those, let me just give you a few examples. The first was to expand work-based learning activity, and we are developing a work-based learning software at the Quad City Chamber. It's called Career Link QC, and it's basically a repository. In Illinois and Iowa, Quad City students don't have equitable access to work-based learning activities, and that includes a job shadow, a work site, too, or an internship or an apprenticeship. There's different resources on both sides of the state. So, hey, why don't we, as the neutral party, step up to be able to provide that repository of work-based learning activities? We also created the High-Priority Jobs Report because we want to analyze the gaps between what jobs we most need and the education and training pipelines in the region. So that was some fun gap analysis that is in this larger chart that we'll kind of get into. And then it said expand training programs. So these are all three recommendations that we are moving on in less than six months. So expand training programs. And again, fame, as Julie mentioned, this is a partnership with the larger manufacturing institute, right? The National Association of Manufacturers says, hey, there are manufacturing communities in the US that we want to partner with because we know manufacturing communities need maintenance technicians. I talked to a factory manager last year that said, look, the Quad Cities needs 1,000 maintenance technicians to rewrite the ship. A thousand. Now, I'm not sure that's the number in our report, but I will tell you, that's the demand. That's the need. So we were happy to bring this group together. We mobilized a dozen manufacturers in Illinois and Iowa. They have established a chapter, and this will be the first fame chapter in the state of Iowa. So when we were out at Arconic for their ribbon cutting, I sort of dropped, planted that seed with the governor. She seems quite interested in this program. So I hope that you will be, too. Let's see here. So my colleague Bill isn't here tonight to go into the mechanics of how to pull all of this data. But basically, what we're, why it's important is to align the supply and demand in the labor market. We have to pay attention to population growth, or the stagnation of that in many cases, diminished educational attainment rates, and diversifying our region's skilled portfolio. I don't know if any of you talk to manufacturers as much as I do, but automation, AI, robotics, they are changing the name of manufacturing almost every quarter. So within 90 days, we're having a completely different discussion about what those tools look like in the factory, and then what does the workforce need to have in order to be able to use those resources? So that conversation changes so, so quickly. Why it's important? Again, we want this report to be part of a decision-making framework, right? We're not here to prop up a million programs. We're here to say, look, if you are a young person or an adult, maybe you're a displaced worker in this community, and you're like, man, I'm thinking about going back and getting some training. Education, higher education's expensive. I know that. I got three. What is a good rate of return on my investment? What a great tool to be able to use this to have a conversation with, with students, with adults, counselors, teachers, higher ed professionals, you know? So folks are excited about the work. What we're doing, we're looking for stronger alignment in the Quad Cities. It's great to pay attention to these 100 occupations, because this is what the data says is going to be the formula for the sustainability of our economy, period. You can ignore the data, or you can look at it, and we can be serious about developing pipelines into these occupations. So, again, data-driven alignment with labor supply, demand in the top jobs. We're trying to inform businesses, focus resources, help diversify the economy, and promote upward mobility. Again, all of the jobs in this chart, all 100, will pay above the livable wage threshold. The data came from software that we have access to called Lightcast. These are the occupational categories that the 100 jobs filter into. So nothing really new or shocking here. Again, some of the research methodology, the criteria for making the list, it did require at least a high school diploma or greater. What we wanted is at least six annual job openings on average. I'm going to go into detail about how to interpret the chart a little bit, but what you'll see, if anybody ever cruises Indeed.com, because everyone in your network's looking for a job, you'll know that on Indeed, you might post one job, but you're going to be hiring 100 people out of it. So just pointing out the job opening, what that means to this report. And again, we're looking for median wage for our benefit around $22 an hour. In addition, there were, to the criteria on the previous slide, these were the additional, at least one of the following criteria. You could make the top 100 list if you had one of these following criteria. So you'll see an entry-level wage of at least $1,880, but the occupation would have had 60 jobs posted that are in demand in the region, and a concentration index of at least .88. I'll talk about concentration index in just a second. So, top results, these criteria identified 100 jobs. We further identified, so in the, in the further, more complete report here, further identified top five jobs in each of those eight categories, which rounded out to our top 40. In those results, what you'll see, out of the average annual openings in the top 100, you'll have 3,300 annual openings. So out of that big chart, annually, 3,300 jobs. That's kind of cool. And then 600 out of the more condensed 40-job report. Interesting to know, and a lot of higher ed folks are paying attention, that 21 occupations in the top 40 jobs require an associate or bachelor's degree, and then 16 occupations in that same top 40 require on-the-job training or apprenticeship. We all know it. We're Quad Citizens. We like hands-on skills, right? And that is a formula for success for this economy. So we want to keep elevating that. Haven't they said, I don't know if anybody's got a Gen Z-er at home, right? But this is going to be the, the hands-on generation. So I find that interesting if you've got young people at home. Top results, tremendous amount of data, which you can see, top five summaries in each industry are focused. For a quick look at the most important results. Let's just go through this super quick. This is not homework. I don't want to belabor this too much. But sometimes when, when you're someone like me and you work for an economist with a PhD, you pay attention and write some notes. So, looking at those meeting hourly earnings, I don't have to go into detail there, but you can kind of see the range between entry level and annual earnings. This is where you kind of start taking a few notes. The 2024 jobs, these are the number of folks in the Quad Cities working in these jobs in 2024. So that's what that column is. Here's your projection for 2028. And in this category, we highlighted engineers for this presentation. And all of the, the areas of engineering were increased by 2028, no surprise. Here are your hires in '24. Here, those average annual openings that I talked about. Again, these are not unique openings for, one opening for one hire. Turnover rates are interesting. I mean, if you really get a second to look at all of the industries, healthcare, IT, law enforcement, education, you're going to see what these turnover rates mean. And some of the data can mean, hey, you've just got folks retiring out, or maybe there's a different story, right? So in healthcare, you have a high turnover rate for an LPN. It's a very high turnover rate. Let's look on the bright side and assume that all those LPNs are getting additional training and getting their RN, right? So again, feeding into that turnover rate. But it's a great column. If you're an industry expert in that area, a great one to pay attention to. You'll see your typical entry-level education. So again, that changes for the entire spectrum of the report. You'll see on-the-job training when that's appropriate. Here, again, is that percentage of the working population that's within that window of retirement. So I know we've talked about this before, Deckard, where we talk about water and wastewater, and how every city municipality needs this. And a lot of it is because the, the expertise is closing in on retirement. And so it's a wake-up call. Hey, look at the chart, and let's make some strategic decisions about how to partner to, to, to build that, that new workforce pipeline. Yes, ma'am, sorry.
On the turnover rate, does that, do you have data that dissects down to, you know, are those retirements, are they leaving the area? Are they switching jobs?
No. We don't have that. We don't have that. So that's when it's fun to get in front of industry partners, like healthcare, to say, hey, what did, what are your observations, right? What is your data? What are your exit interviews saying to help us understand? Because then we can start to build new programs around, is it a retention issue, you know? Or do we need to find money for upskilling so that we can retain people? So, great question, but no, we don't have the granular data for that. The employment concentration, again, we've talked about this in economic development. We're looking, we call it location quotient. But if this number is less than 1.0, the concentration of employees in the Quad Cities is lower than the national average. If it's greater than 1.0, the concentration in the Quad Cities, or is greater than the national average. So we're looking pretty strong here, certainly in our mechanical engineers and nuclear engineers, right? Way above the national average. And we're just under in civil engineering, but our, our commercial construction and building companies will tell you that. If you look, and I'm going to get ahead of myself, but if you look to the very last column on this slide, post-secondary completions for civil engineering, we don't have civil engineering programs within a 45-mile radius of the Quad Cities. We do it within a 90-mile radius, and I'll get to that. But that is just one of those areas, to Ms. Brown's comment, right? Let's brainstorm around that. What's going on? What do we need to do to attract or retain more civil engineers? Your automation index is fun, and I want to keep track of this one, right? This is a new category, a new piece of data. And so what you're looking at here is how much influence does automation have on these occupations. If above 100, those occupations have an above-average impact of automation, and if below, the opposite. So keeping track of this, if, if you, if you find bricklayer in this chart, you will laugh at the high rate of automation, and people are like, what are you talking about, right? Except that, even bricklayers, all contractors are using more digital tools for their blueprints and their layout. And we've seen 3D, you know, concrete, you know, machines, and all of these things add an element of automation. And so this automation is inclusive of AI and automated robotic technology. So a fun column to sit and consider, but will be a fun column, certainly to pay attention to moving forward. And then these two are always very interesting, right? So we, we pulled graduate data from post-secondary institutions within a 90-mile radius, and then the last column are those within a 45-mile radius. Now, when you look at this, right? You're like, oh, my gosh, the civil engineering thing. The demand is so high, right? We have, you know, a projected in 2028, a need for 480 civil engineers, and we're only completing three in the region. That isn't to point a finger and say, hey, everybody needs to start a civil engineering degree. It's to point a finger and go, what, well, how do we want to think about this? If we want to attract more investment to build out north of I-80 and Bettendorf, right? We're going to definitely want some civil engineering talent. And, and how do we grow our own? Or how do we, how do we quantify what that talent looks like in the region? And so it's, again, it is a, meant to be a very provocative report. It means something different to all different audiences, but it's meant to get you thinking and brainstorm and strategize, and, and then let's see collectively amongst partners what we can do. Because guess what? Our friend Bill Polly's going to run this report again next year, and the next year, and the next year. And I don't know about you, I'm a pretty competitive Quad Citizen. I want to see that move, needle move in a positive direction every year. So really fun data, really fun project this last year. We kind of went through that. I mean, this one, this is an interesting slide. You don't have to linger on it too long, but if you really want to know what occupations have, like, you know, head-to-head the number, highest number of, of demand for, for hires, here's, you're kind of your shortlist. But this one can, you know, we could go down a whole rabbit hole with this slide if we wanted to today. So anyways, just know that this one is available. And then truthfully, at the end of it, thank you for sticking with me on this long program, but what I want to say is, host some work-based learning activities, right? Promote apprenticeship. Join any initiative or committee that is supporting workforce development. So if it's a workforce committee that we prop up, if you're a member of sector boards, if you, like me, and you want to join the workforce board, let me know. Or even the college advisory boards, this is a place to go and certainly have your voice heard. And then we really need to, amongst other folks, it's just me doing this work at the Chamber, y'all. And, and we could, we could really move a lot and make a big difference, but I'd love a team. And so if you, if you know some folks that have some extra coins laying around that they want to put their money on an important initiative, I really hope that you'd think of me. So that is the program.
Thank you, ladies, very much. Any questions? Counselor? Yes, Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. So my question is, is, are we short of people and therefore not attracting new industry, new companies to, to our area because we don't have enough people in the right skills?
You know what? Actually, great question, Jerry, and what this looks like. So in manufacturing, we are second to none. So we could attract industrial development for a couple of reasons. One, the labor quotient. So for all those jobs, welders, machinists, even industrial maintenance, we look stronger than the national average. So when a site consultant's doing their desk work around labor and workforce, we immediately look like a shining star because we have a really deep bench in manufacturing talent. Population numbers, the growth isn't there, but it's not there for a lot of regions, right? So what we're doing, I mean, is, in the Quad Cities, finding ways to use technology to automate those dirty, dark, redundant, boring, you know, lower-skilled jobs. Our manufacturers, especially yours here in the Iowa Quad Cities, are, are leading in that space. They're investing. They're leveraging IEDA dollars to invest in technology and be, what they're trying to do, Jerry, is really be as productive as possible, get as many parts out the door as they can, and they're getting it done. We're highly productive. And right now, we do have extra labor in the workforce in the manufacturing space. Now, let's talk about other industries, and this is where, you know, we're going to need to attract some folks. I was just looking on Indeed.com today. If you ever do it, it's just curious. Do you want to know what jobs the Quad Cities is hiring for? You just search by, you know, Bettendorf. Boom. You put a geographic location in, and you're just going to be like, man, what are we hiring for in the Quad Cities? And today, I just scratched my head, and I was like, man, if, a million people need to go into healthcare, Jerry. We have so many open jobs in healthcare, and especially those, those, those doctors, nurse practitioners. You'll see nurse practitioner on the report, or physician assistant. Sorry, you'll see physician assistant on the report. We have a high need for it. We don't have a physician assistant program within 45-mile radius of the Quad Cities. We have to import that occupation, right? And so how do we attract them, and then how do we retain them? So definitely, what I'd love in our next iteration of So, um, definitely what I'd love in our next iteration of this report would be to really get with the higher ed institutions to be like, where are your graduates? They know how many are getting jobs locally, how many are not. And then we'll get a sense of how many folks, uh, are staying in the region and how many are leaving. But, um, it really does give us a really strong picture and it opens up a lot of conversation. So thank you for your question.
And my other question is, what is considered a livable wage?
Mm-hmm, yep.
What, what number?
It, it, so I will give you the dollars and cents on that. In Scott County, Iowa, livable wage is $20.17, and in Rock Island County, Illinois, it's $19.27, but that's for a single individual, no children.
So those numbers are higher than the numbers you showed on the chart for the starting salaries for, for several occupations?
Right. Well, and I, I kind of went through it quickly, but Bill, to get to the hundred, he would look at like an $18 an hour job if there was a demand, if there were a lot of job postings and we had a large labor density, that concentration index. If it was high, I mean, cause it is, let's be honest, for the, for, for manufacturing occupations, maintenance, or I mean, uh, uh, machinist can pay lower, unfortunately. I've seen it way too much, but we need so many of them. And without machinists in the Quad Cities, we are irrelevant to the metal manufacturing industry. So if, if the payer was lower, but the job number, demand was higher and the location quotient was higher than the national average, they made the top 100. Um, I will tell you, they will, uh, scale up quickly and make more than $18 an hour. I know that for sure.
Any other questions? All right. Ladies, thank you very much for your presentation and all the good work you're doing in the community. Thanks for coming and sharing with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
I might just add, and I think Jeff might add, um, we share this, um, with the education partners, with all the superintendents, all of the presidents of the local universities are all part of the conversation in terms of driving curriculum towards where these needs are. Um, and Jeff will tell you, uh, cause we just know to the point about the, the dollars, um, I'll, I'll just use Leclerc Manufacturing as, as an example. They said to us when we got out there, please don't bring any more new jobs in like Amazon because that just takes me, the machinists I got can go out there and make a couple more dollars an hour. So they know what's keeping their workforce happy and they've got to adjust if they're going to keep everybody moving. So this is extremely competitive, but it was great to see the report, um, with the hundred jobs that are, that, that we need to fill, because that's coming from the employers.
Thank you. Jeff, anything to add?
Uh, I would just add that I think that our two high schools here in Bettendorf are doing a great job of being nimble and malleable to what the sort of data says. I think the nursing program at Bettendorf High School has grown leaps and bounds in the last three years. So they're trying to meet the needs and the demands of what our market has and get kids educated at a younger age, which is pretty awesome to see.
Great, thank you. Again, thank you very much, Julie and Chris. Great to see you both.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to our Humility Homes and Services update. For that, we welcome the Chief Executive Officer of Humility Homes and Services, Ashley
Hello.
Hi, Ashley, how are you?
Very well, how are you?
Very well, thank you. Who'd you bring with you?
Barbara Mansell. She is on our board and also Bettendorf resident.
In here.
That's what I was just going to say. I've been a Bettendorf resident for 20 years and I'm here to support our CEO and who has all of the facts and data and, um, my gratitude for the board in supporting us over the past year and look forward to collaboration in the future.
Thank you.
So I just sent over, um, a kind of a one-page handout, just giving an update to the 10,000 that, uh, the city of Bettendorf provided last, it was beginning of December. I know we were here at the end of November, so the money, I believe, was approved beginning of December. So I did an overview related to how all of our services go related to this funding stream. So it includes street outreach services and our emergency shelter services as well as Bettendorf Police drop-offs. So if you look towards the bottom of the page, since, um, from 11/20, 11/4/24 until 9/30 of 25, we served 15 unduplicated adults with their last known zip code being from Bettendorf, Iowa in our emergency shelter. Um, we had one individual enrolled in our street outreach program. Um, they do do outreach throughout mainly the downtown area of Bettendorf, but not everybody always wants to be enrolled, so we call those touchpoints. Um, I don't have the number of touchpoints we had this last year, um, but I have the number that were, were enrolled. And then we had four police drop-offs, um, to our shelter during that time period as well. Um, I don't know if there's any additional questions or anything that I'd be happy to answer or anything else about services, but just providing an update to you all on, uh, what we have used the funding for to date.
None? Well, thank you very much for the quick update, ladies.
Well, that is a very quick update, okay.
Sorry I had to sit through the chamber for a minute.
No, it's totally fine, I learned a lot.
If I didn't know him better, I'd have kicked him out. No, sorry.
No, no, I, I just was like, huh, it was, it was very interesting for me, so thank you.
Oh, good, well, great.
Thanks, Ashley, thanks, Barb.
Yes, thank you both for being here. Please enjoy the rest of your evening. All right, another update. This is with regard to the community survey results from Zen City. And for this update, we welcome our Community Engagement Manager, Angie Sharp. Angie, thanks for being here, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me just get my PowerPoint uploaded here. Here we go. So I'm excited to share with you the latest results of our community survey, which collected responses during the months of May, June, and July of this year. So before we get into those responses, just a quick overview, we started using the community survey, um, in late 2022, right after I started with the city. In the last three years, they've produced six surveys for us, averaging 450 respondents per survey. The thing we love about the community survey is it's a recurring survey, it never stops running, and it's built into our yearly Zen City contract, so we do not pay anything extra for it. So this community survey replaces the National Citizen Survey, if you remember, that we used to use as our survey tool. That provided us one survey every two years, and during our last run in 2022, there were 608 respondents who received, filled out, and returned the paper survey. It was an additional budget item costing the city $19,000 every two years. So again, we think Zen City a better option, better tool for our purposes, and we're excited to show you the latest results of this one. I've provided you all with a copy of the entire community survey report, uh, from Zen City. This is also on our website for anyone in the public to see at www.bettendorf.org/communitysurvey. So for this presentation, we'll just kind of go through the highlights. 447 respondents took the survey again in the months of May, June, and July. And we begin with our overall satisfaction score. This is the one main big question that we ask. Our satisfaction score, 81% when people asked, answered the question, how is the overall quality of life in Bettendorf? As you can see, up 4% from the last cycle. And also, if you look at the line graph, see how that compares to the last five community survey cycles, all hovering around that 80% mark. But if we combine those with positive responses as well as neutral, which is similar to what the old National Citizen Survey does, our score jumps to 96%. So pretty darn good. Here is who responded to the community survey in this latest cycle based on ward and how they answered that same question, how is the overall quality of life in Bettendorf? You'll notice on ward two and three, they have the little star asterix. This means that the group score is based on a small sample size and may not be reliable, something that we are talking to Zen City about, try to encourage them, see what we can do to try to get that number up in future surveys. However, all wards, as you can see, showed positive growth for that question, which is very great, especially if you think about the events that were happening in our city in May, June, and July. You know, we kind of have to go far back in the time machine, but we had another successful public workday in the month of May. We opened up the Landing Aquatic Center. Palmer Hills 50th season was in full swing, another fun year of 4th of July and B Downtown events. But we actually had some unfortunate events out of our control that happened during those months as well. We had the officer-involved shooting, the fire at Wallace's, and the flush, flash flooding event in July. So I think that these numbers are even better when you think about everything that was going on in our community over those three months. Our residents still see a very high quality of life here, even when those unfortunate things are happening. Now we move into our community characteristics. There's 14 of these, so I broke it down into two sides so you can see it a little bit better. Zen City says we should pay attention to the changes that are above 5%. And there's only one on this screen, and that is what's in bold, the sense of overall safety. But again, if you think about when the survey was out, like I was just talking about, May to July, we had a lot of communication about public safety and not just events like the officer-involved shooting. Right before that was when we started talking about and surveying every single one of our residents about a proposed police station, and we sent every single resident a letter listing all the challenges our police are facing in its current sit- station and situation. So that could be the reason for the slight drop. All that being said, though, I mean, the numbers speak for themselves. Sense of overall safety scored at 94% when you combine positive and neutral answers, so still very good. I do not want to overlook the community characteristic that had the highest positive answer, quality of parks and recreational amenities, which has always scored high since we started this survey three years ago, as you can see from the 0% change. However, over the summer, we also had the addition of three community input events at Edgewood, Lincoln, and Friendship Park, which have, could have kept that score so high. When you combine the positive with neutral answers, this characteristic scored at 96%, closely followed by overall cleanliness and maintenance, access to quality education, and quality of waste and recycling services. These are the rest of our community characteristics, some of the lower scoring ones. As you can see, our lowest positive answers came from availability of affordable housing and availability of jobs that pay a living wage. However, it is worth noting that that characteristic, availability of jobs that pay a living wage, went up 5% in positivity, and we saw some other nice characteristics as well, to the availability of a variety of art and cultural events, ability of residents to give input to the Bettendorf government, and ease of getting around by public transportation. So now the big question is, what do we do with all this data? Uh, these next four slides are something new to the Zen City Community Survey, the priority matrix. So Zen City is helping us prioritize all 14 of those community characteristics by plotting them based on what residents rated each community characteristics, and then how they answered that big question, the overall quality of life question. So the first category is high-impact challenges. These are lower satisfaction areas that significantly affect residents' lives and community well-being. As such, they are high-impact challenges that should be prioritized. Uh, Zen City advised that these are availability of affordable housing and acceptance of residents of all backgrounds. The second, um, priority, priority matrix is strategic strengths. These are characteristics that residents value highly and are satisfied with, maintain or leverage these as community strengths, says Zen City. Those include overall quality of services provided by Bettendorf, sense of overall safety, and overall cleanliness and maintenance. For minimal focus, these are lower satisfaction areas that do not strongly influence quality of life, suggesting a lower priority for investment unless specific strategy goals apply. So availability of jobs that pay a living wage, ease of getting around by public transportation, sense of community among residents, ability of residents to give input to Bettendorf government, and availability of a variety of art and cultural events. And finally, the maintained category are well-regarded characteristics with a smaller influence on the overall quality of life. While they can be maintained efficiently, they may warrant attention if they align with specific strategic goals. These include access to quality healthcare services, access to quality education, quality of parks and rec- amenities, and quality of waste and recycling services. Now for the fun part, we look at our benchmark data, which is how we compare with other communities that have similar demographics to Bettendorf.
Angie, give me a sec real quick. Lisa, did you have a question on those slides?
I'm sorry. The matrix there.
Yes.
Four screens. Should we have that at goal setting?
We have it.
Okay.
Don't we? In the stuff that you have provided?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Need to have it at goal setting.
Yeah, we can bring it to goal setting. Bring yours, or Angie can give us a new copy. Thank you, Jerry.
Sorry.
I'll be trick-or-treating, but I promised to prove.
Beforehand. None of us will be giving candy at our houses.
Your priorities.
I got a Ghostbuster to walk around and collect candy. Okay, back to it. Benchmark data. Uh, this is how we compare to other communities that have similar demographics to Bettendorf. So the important thing we're looking for here is the blue dot, which is Bettendorf, and how it compares to our cohort, the black square, and the national average, which is the gray triangle. Zen City concludes the overall quality of life in Bettendorf is 8% higher than its cohort and 14% higher than the national score. So very good, and we are definitely higher when it comes to those three questions that you can see there on your screen.
Yeah, baby.
Let's look at the 14 community characteristics. Again, the black, uh, square is our cohort, the gray triangle is the national average. For the most part, if we're not right there, kind of in the cluster of our cohort or the national average, we're ahead when it comes to satisfaction. These are the rest of the community characteristics, again, right there with the cohort for those first two and way ahead when it comes to what we showed in that previous slide, our top three, overall cleanliness and maintenance, quality of parks and rec amenities, quality of waste and recycling services. Finally, we come to my favorite part of the community survey, the free text responses. Zen City asks two questions. The first is, what is your favorite thing about living in Bettendorf? And here are the results with the top topic being safety. So even though we saw that that community characteristic had a 6% drop in this survey, it's clear that people still feel very safe in our community, and that is one of their favorite parts about living in this community. Zen City also asked the question, what's the thing you'd like to change the most about life in Bettendorf? I have sent you those responses, and you can see the top topics in the report that I've given you. You can also find it, of course, on our website. We have the full survey report, which anyone in our community can look at at www.bettendorf.org/communitysurvey.
Thanks, Angie. Any questions for Angie? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I guess, I'm confused that in the survey, people are, a lot of people are looking for jobs that pay a living wage, and yet we just heard a report where it says there's all kinds of jobs out there. So I guess I'm confused as to why. And I'm not sure, you can, I don't think you can answer it, but it's just a comment.
Thank you. Any other questions? Greg Adamson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Angie, um, we all know that the city is a very safe city, uh, and for those folks that, uh, have some concerns, are we able to say what those concerns are? Is it, uh, traffic? Is it, uh, news articles? Is it, what, uh, do we, do we know? Is there any way to find out?
Um, when it comes to the survey, they do have these free text responses, which is really, really powerful. Um, you've gotten all the, um, responses, there's about 800 of them for you to kind of look through and sift through. Um, I can certainly pull out any responses that had word safety in them for you to kind of give a better picture, but that is one of the nice things about offering the free text response, what is your favorite thing? And then what is your least favorite thing, what you'd want to change about? But again, overall, the sense of overall safety was still at 96%.
If I just pick public safety, I mean, in, uh, parks, if, if somebody, there's a little dissatisfaction, is it, what is, what is it? You have to look at, you have to look at those comments, is that the best?
Yes, yeah, definitely. And you, um, on your computers, you have access to the dashboard as well. I'm happy to walk through any of those so we can kind of dive down a little bit more, but I can certainly make a note to pull all comments on parks and safety if you'd like me to.
Well, just, I would just use those as examples. I just, in any of those categories, if people are dissatisfied, unless we have 100%, is, do we, how do we identify what their concern is? Yeah. Or what they'd like to see, that would be that.
Yeah, those would be those two last questions, the favorite thing and then what you'd want to change.
I'll, I'll, I'll get with you.
Yeah, let's do it.
Angie, if I may, really quick.
Sure.
I'm sorry, Your Honor. One thing that Zen City has suggested to us, Councilmember Adamson, we have the ability to drill a little deeper through an additional survey that they can offer for us. And they've asked us here in the recent past, is there anything in speci- in particular that we would really like to focus on in the coming quarter or the coming next year? So I think kind of our strategy as well was to look at this information prior to goal setting, get it in front of you, and simply respond to questions like that to where if there is something you'd like us to drill deeper on, we can specify through a line of questioning, uh, what we may want to learn more about so we can either devote resources, time, or energy to, uh, getting more information and providing a better service in that area for what you might want to see. So, once we get into goal setting, I think if this is something we'd want to drill in deeper, Zen City does offer us that opportunity to, uh, further drill down and get some more information.
Because, uh, Jerry, Jerry had a good point, and it seems to me the obvious answer is for people that are stating that there's not living wages out there, and we have somebody else saying that there are a whole bunch of them, there's, how do we help our citizens connect the dots? You know, so, something else to think about. But thank you, Your Honor.
Any other questions? All right, Angie, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chat with you in a few minutes.
Sounds good.
We'll move to another presentation or update. This is our Parks and Recreation update. For that, we welcome our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. John Burns, our Parks Advisory Board Chair, Mr. Greg Macheta, and our Trees Are Us Committee Member, Mr. Bob Sartor. Gentlemen, thank you very much for being here, and we appreciate the good work that's happening in parks. Lots of fun stuff happening right now.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Council, for letting us do a quick update. We're gonna go through, oh, yeah. Come on, come on.
I know, Greg.
Yeah, thank you. Been sitting too long.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. We're gonna go through, uh, this shouldn't take too much time. Uh, we're gonna have three kind of obje- objectives here. We're gonna go through our bi-annual master plan update. Uh, Councilmember Powsinski, when I started and we completed our master plan, actually asked for, you know, updates ever so often to show that we're using this. So I'm gonna run through that quickly. We're gonna go into our park advisory board and staff strategic planning, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Sartor for a Trees Are Us update. So with that, uh, we'll jump in, I'm gonna do quick introductions. Again, Bob Sartor, uh, represents, I don't know, a whole bunch of boards and, in, uh, for the city of Bettendorf, and he'll be representing Trees Are Us today. And Greg Ma- Macheta, uh, he's our President of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. So I will, uh, turn it over to him in just a minute, but I want to start with some updates on our, uh, master plan. Uh, again, thi- this master plan is about seventy pages long. It's pretty policy-heavy, so this is an example of those. I'm not, I wasn't gonna go through, I'm gonna save you the time of going through line by line on what items we've done, but I wanted to note to Council that this is guiding our decision-making and guiding our process. So, for example, when it calls out that we have an objective to increase citizen involvement, that's where you see the process of these, uh, public input meetings happening. That's where you see what Angie's team does with Zen City. We've been getting more feedback than ever before. So these, these objectives work within what we're doing to guide our decision-making and our, our policymaking. And, uh, this is, this is really just to say, we are using this frequently, um, and, and referencing it frequently. So, uh, this is another example of some of the key, uh, recommendations that were taken away from the master plan, and there, there were a couple, uh, three or four main bullet points. Uh, review and update the Forest Grove Park master plan is gonna be recurring here. You'll see it in just a minute when we get into our strategic plan and what, what the park board wants to see going forward. But there were some other, uh, you know, aspects of the, the master plan that they wanted us to focus on. And again, these have been the main focus from what we're taking away from this plan, uh, on the policy side. As it relates to the park side, on the top right there, you can see an example of what it looks like for a, of, of recommendation on a specific park. So this is Edcheck Park that I chose. I went in with little red lines and kind of started checking off the boxes. This is literally what we're physically doing, is trying to check off every single recommendation over the next five to ten years, however long this, this master plan is good for. So some of those things will be prioritized, prioritized, some of them will take longer. But as you can see with Edcheck Park, we've done almost everything there is to do. There's a couple things we have to go back and finish up, but we are almost to the point where this page of the master plan is completely behind us. And I do wanna, um, uh, say that we ran some numbers on Edcheck. Uh, we used AI to grab data on usage of the new playground. So we, we studied the same month period, because we haven't been open very long, the same month period from twenty-twenty-four, and compared it to twenty-twenty-five. Unique park visits in that month are up double, they've doubled. Uh, overall park visits are up over seventy-five percent, and, uh, there, people are coming back at a higher level as well. So we had over five thousand people come to that park, uh, in one month, and, and that, that hadn't happened in a long time. So I think you can see already the investments paying off. More people are coming to the parks, people are staying longer, and, uh, it was really good data to get, uh, from, from that level. This is another example of, uh, Edgewood Park. So again, just trying to give the example of how we are going through from our master plan and, and identifying, you know, priorities. So we take the master plan, we go to the public, and we say, well, what do you want to see first? And then we start executing that. So we're working on, you know, we've purchased the, uh, playground equipment, we've purchased the shelter, we've, you know, haven't replaced the bathrooms, but we've upgraded the heck out of them, we painted them. Brian Schmidt's team, uh, has done a ton of work on, on bidding out different pro, you know, uh, facets of, of upgrading these restrooms. So we're working on this stuff little by little and going through, and, and that's, again, the goal is, at the end of this, to have all these, uh, bullet points crossed off ultimately. So, uh, with that, I wanna kind of turn it over to, to Greg, and, and so he can say a couple words, but I just want to thank him, Bob, everybody on our park board have been very supportive, uh, of everything we've been doing. We've done a lot of stuff, and I think we have some really exciting, uh, different things, uh, going forward. And again, Greg's been incredibly supportive the whole time, and I know you have some thoughts on the state of everything.
Well, first of all, I wanted, on behalf of the Parks Advisory Board and Bob, myself, I want to thank, uh, everyone for the city, for the priority that they've taken towards parks. Um, in general, to the maintaining the existing ones, I know when you mentioned Brian and Jason, those guys have done a terrific job at maintaining the existing parks. Uh, the investments you guys have made on the new parks and the commitment that's been there, the leadership by John and Kim before him, has just been dramatic changes for the community. Uh, and also just wanted to say about the impact that it's made to the community, overall the, the neighborhoods, the, the growth of neighborhoods, the, the fun times that they've had there, the enjoyment that's been, as a result of these new parks, and people wanting to move into the area because of commitment like that made towards the, the parks and the updates that have been made. So I just wanted, like I said, from the Parks Advisory Board, we just want to thank the leadership that's been done from both John, like I said, and, and the entire group. But it's really made a tremendous impact, and you just saw some of the slides that John presented already, and that's just the gist of what's about, you know, happening in this area. So it seems like every couple of months, there's been a grand opening where kids are just having such a good time around this area. So again, appreciative of everything that's been done, and, and thank you again to the committee.
Yeah. I'm sorry, anything you have to add?
Well, not much to add. I, I've been very pleased, uh, of course, I, I'm kind of the steward of Veterans Memorial Park and, and, uh...
We need to get you like a insignia on a vest or something.
Give him a vest.
Thank you for that.
But, uh, uh, I've been very pleased, uh, with, with, uh, everything that we've asked for, for that particular park has, has come to fruition. Uh, with the bad shell, we got the paint, we got the roof, and, and a lot of the other things that needed to be done have been done. And, uh, we're very appreciated to Parks Maintenance and Jason Manfield for, for fulfilling our list. I don't have a lot left on my list, which is amazing.
Yeah. No, I, I can't, I can't echo that enough. Park, park maintenance is the one thing, you, you only hear it's when it's negative. We just, you know, we don't hear when they go out and they do a great job and they mow it like they're supposed to every day. And I know those guys work a lot to keep the parks up, so genuinely, I, I'm glad you said that, because I think, I think they get a lot of credit for what they do every single day, so. Uh, with that, we're gonna go into kind of what the strategic plan is going forward. This is, I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on this, please, of course, ask questions if you have them, but this is, uh, in the language that you're gonna see for, uh, goal setting. So we're, we're trying to use that same language. Uh, a lot of this is what you're gonna see or maybe have already seen in, uh, the, the documents that I, I'm gonna send in for Parks Recreation. So, uh, with that, we're gonna jump into what we think is our top priority, and that's the development of Forest Grove Park. So this matches the master plan, I think this matches a lot of conversation that's happened at Forest Grove. Uh, city staff have gone through an RFQ-RFP process and identified a consultant for a feasibility study that, uh, we would like to see coming out of goal setting to go forward with that and really start the process of, uh, interviewing council members, interviewing shareholders, interviewing the public, and, and, and starting to, to form what this is while also testing those ideas. So I think that's the next step to go forward. The picture that's up here is, of course, just conceptual to show that there could be a million things in this park, but I think we really have an opportunity here to meet the moment and, and to, we have a hundred acres of a blank slate, and, and I think we want to be creative, I think we want to be forward-thinking on, on what goes out there. Uh, next, we want to give consideration to our facility that we currently are housed in. So that would be the current Bettendorf Community Center. It's starting to show its age, if you haven't been in there in a while. It's, uh, it's served its purpose, I think it was built in the forties, late forties, early fifties, and it's kind of starting to fail in, in certain parts. Uh, I, you know, thi- this, the point of this is not to ask for money, it's not to ask for a study. I think it's just to say, let's give some credence to the thought of, or the notion that there might be something else in the future. I don't know if we want to keep sinking money into a building that's, you know, sixty, seventy years old. Maybe that's looking for partnerships and opportunities going forward. So the, the other thought with the community center or recreational facility is to highlight the importance. I'm gonna read you a small excerpt from our twenty-twenty-four strategic plan. Again, if we're gonna use planning, if we take the time to do what Angie does with Zen City, what the master plan does, what the strategic plan calls out, I think we should, uh, you know, at least note the, uh, findings from that. So this is from twenty-twenty-four. Uh, this survey captured the perception of about twenty-six percent of all Bettendorf residents. So this is, uh, from one of the final pages, the final close-ended question asked respondents to prioritize twelve possible future projects or activities. More park activities for older kids and upgrade indoor facilities rated as the highest priorities had dog parks rated as the lowest priority by a wide margin, but to further prioritize that list and remove any temptation from ranking all of them as high priorities. The last question asked participants to choose one project from the same list of twelve for Bettendorf Parks Recreation to undertake. Create a community center for recreational programs and community use overwhelmingly received the most responses. So the, the community center ended up scoring, interestingly, the lowest-quality facility that we have, but the highest-importance facility. So that's an interesting juxtaposition between those two things, lowest quality but highest importance. So again, as it relates going forward, uh, we're not here to ask for, for money right now at this, at this point, but I do think we want to, uh, chew on what a premier city looks like, uh, as it relates to our indoor recreational facilities. Uh, next, we have some really interesting projects. I think these are things the park board, the, have talked about for a while, actually, as it relates to a pump track and bicycle playground. And, uh, now we kind of want to execute on this. So we, we have, uh, a little bit of a grassroots movement going, we have folks that have come out and, uh, offered support. We've actually had this finished second in voting at a couple of our public input meetings. We've now identified a location and an opportunity for some private dollars to come in and help subsidize something like this. I think this is really unique. If we want to be a park or a city that's on the cutting edge of trends, that addresses issues in our community, childhood obesity, sense of, you know, community, uh, this is the type of amenity that brings that together. This is the type of, of a park system that you can be really proud of to, to live here. So a bike, a pump track and bike playground are gonna be in there for major upcoming projects, uh, proposed in our capital budget. And secondly, uh, we want to look into adding a second splash pad in the city. Our city has about forty-one thousand people, we estimate, um, living here right now. We have one splash pad, we know the popularity of these and the demand for them. I mean, you can drive past Lincoln Park at any time, and it's pretty packed, so I think there's a demand for a second, uh, splash pad. Again, I think this is something we can go get dollars to offset the city cost. I think we can look into the, uh, funding mechanisms to spread this out over multiple years to minimize our capital burden, and I think this is a great opportunity for us. I know the park board, uh, agrees that this could be an incredible project for our city going forward. Finally, we have, uh, baseball field upgrades. So what I mean by this, we actually have, uh, we've been talking about a lot of our resource management. The way our, our city, our park system is set up, we have a lot of baseball fields that are in one individual park. And from working with our user groups, our rental groups, they would rather see one baseball field that's heavily invested in instead of two baseball fields that are a little bit of an afterthought. So one plus one doesn't always equal two here, and I think putting a little bit of money into this is gonna help us, uh, work some agreements out and increase our utilization, decrease the city subsidy for, uh, what we, what we pay to maintain these fields, and overall increase the satisfaction of the users. So we have a really great opportunity here, and there's gonna be more to come on that in goal setting. And finally, Kiwanis Park, the playground, this is the next playground that is in line for an update. I went out there and took some photos of it. The, it's starting to show its wear, it's also about, uh, twenty to twenty-five years old. So it is time for this playground to get turned over as well, and we are almost done with playground renovations. We only have a couple left after this. So I, I think this is, there's been a lot of exciting work that's happened, uh, really quickly. My last two slides, really quickly, are just on the challenges going forward. Again, no, this is the, more something for us to keep in mind. Our city administration, our, uh, development process is actually quite thorough, it's been incredible to be a part of from the park side, but this just shows the needs of parks going forward. Land acquisition's gonna be harder than ever going forward, that land is very valuable out there. So as we develop as a city, we want to look for our, meeting our goal of having every citizen in the city of Bettendorf live within a ten-minute walk of a park. That's gonna be hard to do, but it's a heck of a lot easier to do on the front end of planning. Um, you know, same thing with, uh, trails as well. And speaking of trails, this is, uh, this is, we work with Bi-State, um, our metropolitan, Metropolitan Planning Organization to come up with proposed trails that, to make us eligible for certain grant opportunities. But funding for trails is gonna be difficult as well, as grants are more competitive than ever, and there are fewer than them, of them than ever. So when we build a trail, we want it to make sure it makes sense, we want it to be strategic, and so when we use that money, we know we're making a good long-term investment for, you know, uh, making us more multimodal, uh, connecting to two different trail systems, stuff like that. So I think this is to show, there's a lot of, uh, thought that goes into this going forward, so when we do make those connections, they are well-thought-out, and they are certainly worth the investment. So with that, that is what I had for you, and I can, uh, turn it over to Bob unless there's any quick questions on the...
I think this will work. You got it? Any questions for John? Yes, Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. Excuse me. When are we going to see some money start to appear in the CIP for Forest Grove Park?
That's a great question. So the, the feasibility study is gonna, is gonna really help guide and when and where we need certain types of investment. So, um, I mean, as much as I would love to say, hey, give me a million dollars today and I'll go spend it, I think we want to be really, really strategic about how we, how we spend money there, right? We want to make sure that when we're investing, I've vetted, you, you have vetted with me, the, the full process, the full picture, what is phase one and phase five, right? Whatever that might look like. So I think we'll talk about this a lot when we get into goal setting. I think there's gonna be, um, we're really close to the opportunity of being able to start funding the future, but throwing a hundred thousand dollars to say, go build a soccer field, I'm just making something up, but I, I think that's less strategic as deciding what do we want Forest Grove to be? Are we, are we the residential passive park, or are we part of what is out there with TBK Bank? I think we're gonna be both, but part of what I want to do is make sure that when we spend money, we're spending it in a strategic, uh, you know, method that, that in, really like takes the whole body of work out there, um, because it is such an opportunity. It's a hundred acres of parkland, and you're not, we're not gonna develop it all at once, it's gonna take time. So I think you'll start seeing that really soon, but, uh, we're, we're happy, like I said, we're chomping at the bit to get started on this feasibility study whenever, whenever we're, we're ready to roll.
Any other questions for John? Yes, Greg. Hey.
Your Honor. First of all, um, I, I was very pleased, um, I wish I'd have thought of it, uh, with the community, uh, meetings at the different parks and what, what do you want to see in uh, meetings at the different parks and what, what do you wanna see in your neighborhood park? Thought that was phenomenal idea. So, congratulations on that. And then for this feasibility study, I think you're right, Forest Grove Park is, we gotta decide what it, what, what we wanna have that look like. Um, but, uh, I'd like to see, make sure that, uh, you, you have, I'm gonna be off, but you got two other, um, council people that have a park and rec background. I'd like to make sure that, uh, they're included in that heavily if they wanna be.
Yeah.
To, uh, to make the strategic.
Yeah.
Uh, decisions. That's it. Thank you, your honor.
And, and we do just FYI, we do part of the deliverable from the feasibility study is multiple shareholder meetings. So everyone of, on council who wants to participate will be heavily involved or we do different methodology for you to say, this is what I think should be here. And again, then we go test those. If I say it's, makes sense to go build a big soccer field and we're gonna have it be free or charge or whatever it is, we're gonna test all of that. So I can come back and say, here's what the park looks like. Here's what it's gonna cost you to run or here's what it's gonna make. So we'll, we'll determine what that looks like ultimately through testing that feasibility.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, your honor.
You're back.
Jerry. Thank you, your honor. So regarding Forest, uh, Forest Grove Park, you had a successful, uh, community input at Edgewood, at Friendship, uh, at Lincoln. Are we gonna do the same thing at Forest Grove? I mean, there's a, there's a large neighborhood there within walking distance that I would guess that those people have got some ideas as what they would like to see in their neighborhood.
Yep, that is another, uh, piece of this. So we will have, uh, a lot of levels to this. We're gonna have, um, a committee that's gonna get together, kind of an ad hoc committee, once we get further down the road. Uh, we have all sorts of public input and voting, you know, that's gonna happen for Forest Grove Park. Forest Grove Park is slightly different than a neighborhood park, uh, and it could be this regional type park that pulls people not just from Bettendorf, not just from the Quad Cities, but they might come in from further away. If we do it to the scale that we think, you know, we have an opportunity here. So, it's important to get all the feedback on our local priorities as well. Uh, but I think it's important to note too, uh, we wanna meet the moment of what, what that opportunity could be out there.
Agreed. All right. Thank you. Bob, you've got the floor.
I need to hit a button. Okay, so from here. This one here? Oh, yeah, understood. Is that on this?
Well, I'll probably take over that screen, yeah. Yep, there you go. There we go. Okay. This is my septem- septennial presentation. I was here seven years ago uh, to announce the program that we were going to do something crazy. Uh, probably be one of the few cities in the nation and certainly the only one in the state that would try to beat the Emerald Ash Bore for city trees. Uh, and do it with volunteers. Uh, I'm happy to say tonight that, uh, the plan did succeed, uh, excuse the pun, we're, we're out of the woods pretty much. And, uh, uh, you see on the map there, we, we have, uh, a lot of trees left. We started out, uh, and of course, I have to offer some eye candy other than myself.
Veterans.
And this is, yep, south of Veterans Park. Uh, of the three hundred and thirty-eight trees, uh, three hundred and five are still there. We lost, uh, some to the Durate Show and we lost ten to building the landing, uh, which went to a good cause. Uh, each year, it, they're being treated out of tile funds for forty-four hundred dollars a year. Uh, which is basically a little more than the price of taking down one of those three hundred and five trees. Now, I had noted in the CIP that, uh, in twenty-three, twenty-four, that, that a hundred thousand dollars could only remove twenty-nine trees. And that's a pretty good price even in the private realm because it took out the stumps too. So we've got three hundred and five left. And, uh, there's another little more ash tree eye candy. Uh, they're all around the city. Here's up and down, uh, Crow Creek Road. There's thirteen in a row there. East of Thirty-first. And of course, we have the, uh, infamous, uh, uh, Decker's Woods between, uh, between first and Nine Hole.
I'm not in there that often, Bob.
Cheap shot, I'm sorry. Uh, uh, here's out and about kind of a sum up of, of what's being done. Uh, there's soil injection for trees that are less than eighteen inch. And that's a massive, uh, investment of five dollars a year per tree. For larger trees such as the one you see here and they're getting larger. Uh, it's, uh, sixty-five dollars for every three years. The difference, of course, this is a preventative. The, uh, the tree can never have had Emerald Ash Bore. It's not gonna cure it. This is a curative and that's why it's more expensive because it comes in leader uh, containers which are worth about four hundred and fifty dollars a container. Uh, all you need is an applica- applicator volunteer with an IDOL's license, sixty hours of spare time and, uh, insurance and bonding cost. Uh, Tao member, uh, Clayton Lloyd is the principal assistant and driver on this and Ron Phillips helps out on occasion. Uh, there's kind of a snide comment about his driving below that. Uh, truly, he hadn't driven a manual transmission since the Johnson administration. So, don't ask me how I know that. Uh, anyway, uh, some things that, uh, Trees Are Us is still doing, does every year, and I think is an important investment in the community is we have the Arbor Day Planning where we get the, uh, kids involved. And this year it was middle school. We have our Toastmaster and, uh, uh, the guy that does the proclimating, our proclamater, which this year was Steve Grimes, very good at it. Uh, we put in, uh, I believe nine trees along there, uh, for the school. Uh, we also go out and, and do a lot of pruning. Last year we did seventy trees and, uh, it wasn't an undisclosed location, but it wasn't this photo. This photo is, uh, looks like along, uh, Tango Foot, uh, somewhere around, uh, Sheraton, I think maybe here somewhere. Anyway.
Just, just west of, just west of Eighteenth, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it's just west of Eighteenth. Correct. Very good. Uh, here's, here's the cadre and listed. These are the people that you generally see at the meetings and these are also the people that, uh, go out and do the, the hard work uh, of, of, uh, of pruning, of planting trees, uh, which, uh, you saw we did since, uh, since Jason has not been here, we've done five hundred and, uh, one trees. Uh, I also threw this one in. I alluded to this, uh, in my short comments during the parks presentation. This place was really a bramble, uh, before Jason arrived. Uh, we, it was an ash nursery. Uh, what happened was is the state extension gave us about eighty ash trees which mercifully stayed there. But then, of course, they went ahead and go, uh, they went ahead and, uh, all died because you couldn't treat them in a flood plain. Uh, so, uh, staff had to come in and clear all that out, which was a real mess because over the years, a lot of the, a lot of the things falling out of the cottonwoods, uh, just got kinda pushed in there. So there was a lot of detritus and everything else. Uh, they came, cleared it out. We came in and planted, uh, uh, twenty-two trees or so. And this again is just, uh, just east of the band shells, uh, northeast of the band shell. Uh, we put on the deer guards every year. And, uh, uh, here's a review. I wanted to make sure that folks knew that, uh, always good to tell, tell you how much money we're saving. Uh, the average tree with a discount costs two hundred and fifty dollars. Twenty years ago, uh, Wayne, uh, Hannel noted that it was costing a hundred and sixty-one dollars. And for the tree you see, uh, I promised you eye candy. Uh, the tree you see with me was, uh, ninety-eight dollars in twenty-twenty-two. Uh, one of the points that I wanted to make that, that's the savings that we're doing have amounted since two thousand and eighteen to close to seventy thousand dollars in buying trees. Also wanted to comment, uh, that one of the reasons we plant this size tree instead of the ones, uh, you can note some, uh, familiar people in here. Uh, uh, Judge Doug McDonald, I was just at his memorial service last night. He was a real mensch. Uh, but, uh, we plant these sized trees instead of these sized trees now, which are much bigger. Because, uh, people think if you plant these sized trees, you're giving your plant, your landscaping a head start. Actually, uh, two-thirds of the root ball stays at the nursery. And this tree sits in the ground for three years and says, I hate you. And after five years, this smaller tree, which comes in a pot and I, I can plant it personally, catches up to the same sized tree. Uh, this one went in in twenty-two. It's now a twenty-seven foot tall tree. It's, it's there at, uh, Veterans Park. If you wanna say hello, stop by and visit. Uh, the, uh, uh, I also wanted to say that, uh, uh, our batting average is very, very good. Uh, eighty percent is by university standards when they do studies after five years is a good amount. In all the parks except for Forest Grove, uh, we bat close to ninety percent. We do this, uh, with the, again, giving more credit to Jason here. Uh, is, uh, because we now select most of the trees to be planted. Uh, so we get the right tree in the right place and that's the most important, whether you're at home or anywhere else. Get the tree that's adapted to the ground that you're gonna put it in. Uh, get a diverse, uh, selection of trees. Uh, newly planted trees getting watered. This is in the past has been the shortest, this has been the biggest shortfall for Bettendorf trees is getting them watered. Uh, they're getting watered now. We, uh, Tao has been putting on trunk guards for mowers and protecting them from deer. And staff has been applying, uh, mower buffers, uh, around the mulch to keep it going. Like I say, Forest Grove is exceptionally challenging. As you can see, again, the model and the tree, that's the way it is out there. And you can see from the turf that it's not exactly amenable to much, to many growing things. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions for Bob, Greg, and then we'll go to Lisa?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so you're, we, because we had talked a while ago about the watering. It's, it's.
That's the biggest deal, yeah.
Is it getting done? I mean, it's getting done now?
It's getting done, yeah. And this is, this is basically it's being done consistently. And in the first two years, uh, it's being done for these trees. Now, some of the worries I have are some of the trees that Bettendorf is buying through, uh, through contractors, through landscape, uh, contractors. The landing has, uh, seventy-two new trees. But of course, uh, if the irrigation gets turned off, they don't get watered. And it, it's critical that they do get watered, uh, during the, when the, when the pool is closed.
That was, that was, I guess, my next question was the, the trees at the pool. Is that, uh, who's, who's, who's responsible to water those?
Yeah, well, that's, that's a good point. Uh, a lot of the trees, they're kind of in, in limbo and, and who's responsible for them. Uh, and the ones at the landing, uh, you know, whose, whose, uh, charges are they? Because it really would have helped. We had a September that was so dry. How dry was it? Well, it was so dry, I saw a Chihuahua being chased up Twenty-third Street by two swamp oaks. It was that dry. Uh, didn't work at home either. Uh, anyway. Uh, and they didn't get any water. I hope that isn't to their detriment.
Okay. Uh, that's something to, gotta, had to get taken care of. I have one more thing, your honor.
Yes, sir.
Um, I wanna thank you, Bob, for, um, all the stuff you do at the memorial, but I think it would be fun if you would tell everybody about that special tree that you planted for us. And the name of the tree and then the official name of the tree.
Well, the name of the tree is, uh, I'll try to keep the story short. I was talking to my ex-partner in, uh, in, in Brooklyn by the name of Saul, who had said he'd just been to, uh, the Brooklyn Botanical Gardens. And he had seen a Caucasian wingnut. And I said, Saul, snap out of it. You're in Brooklyn. He said, no, that's the name of the tree. And sure enough, he was right. There is a tree called a Caucasian wingnut. And it turns out to be a great tree. It lives along tri- time, grow, grows extremely fast. And as far as I know, there are none others in the state of Iowa. So I went out and got seeds from all over Europe and tried out and found, got three to grow. And one's at the golf course, one's at the, uh, memorial. And it's the fastest growing tree I've ever seen. In two thousand and eighteen, it was in a, uh, red beer go cup being a wingnut. And now it's a, uh, twenty-nine tall foot tall tree. So.
And, and the tree's name is?
Ernie.
Ernie?
Yeah.
And what's the official name?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a, uh, Terrier Caria Fraxinafolia. It's called a Caucasian wingnut. It's, it's, uh, named Ernie after the guy that, uh, uh, comes to visit it once in a while. He's a veteran. And, uh, he comes to visit it. He's really quite interested in it. So.
But it's a great tree. It's.
It's, it's a, it's a classic tree. I wish I had a picture, but you could see him there.
So, Eric, thank you for all you do, Bob.
Yeah, Ar- Arnie is at the golf course and Bernie is at the, uh, lagoon. Those are the three Caucasian wingnuts. And probably the only three in the state. At trees it is.
That's cool. Lisa?
I'm good.
Okay. Jerry?
Thank you, your honor. So my question is on the landing trees, what's in the contract? Don't we normally have provisions in construction contracts that the contractor is responsible for maintenance for one year? And have a one-year guarantee?
I don't, I don't know in this particular contract. Now, I just wanted to say as a side, now, when the, when the state, uh, uh, DOT brought in those, uh, three hundred and fifty-five trees, uh, to the park, uh, urban park, uh, they had to water them for two years and they've, they've done fairly well. Uh, but, uh, I don't remember seeing anything. And I looked at that, uh, contract landscaping. I don't remember seeing anything about watering. I just remember seeing that they go in. I know they were to water after they sat in, but I don't think it was for very long.
Mr. Schmidt, do you have an answer for us?
I do not, your honor, but I, cause I do not have the contract in front of me, but I would be glad to get that before you and, uh, present to you my findings tomorrow night.
Perfect. Appreciate it.
A, a follow-up on that, you know, depend upon, uh, other construction contracts. And depending upon Brian's answer, maybe it's a lesson learned and we need to put it in future contracts. For example, when we build a new police station, I'm sure there's gonna be some trees out there. Put it in the contract that the contractor is responsible for one or two years to water and provide the mulch. And that's my other question is, do we mulch these?
Yes, we do.
New trees and for how long? Two years, three years?
Two years, yeah. And, and after that point, they get about two years with the water. They get two years with the mulch. And they, uh, get the trunk guards and the, uh, deer guards, uh, Tao does that. And after the mulch time runs out, uh, they still get a, a spray around uh, for about another year or so to keep, to keep the turf away so they don't have to be weed whacked.
Other question? Awesome. John, thank you very much. Uh, Bob, thank you very much. Greg, thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation and the update. Thanks for the conversation. And for all the work that you do. We appreciate that. We do have one item to appear on tomorrow night's agenda to discuss tonight. And for that, we welcome our community development director, Mr. Mark Hunt. This is items to appear at ten and eleven. We'll have a public hearing about a change in zoning.
Thanks, your honor. Give me just, uh, one second here.
Thanks for joining us.
So, uh, thanks again, your honor. Case twenty-five zero four-five is a rezoning at twenty-three ninety-five Spruce Hills Drive, Central City, um, area. You're all very familiar with it. It's currently zone C one. We wanna go to Z two or the applicant wants to go to C two. And we'll tell you a little bit about that. Uh, Kamal Hussain is the applicant. He's requesting that C one to C two zoning. Um, the applicant has determined with the existing structure. It was built in nineteen seventy-three. It's fifty-two years old, showing its age. Um, would like to some, replace it with some new mixed use, but still keep the Teskies brand there. So this particular person does own both Teskey stores and they would stay uh, at this site or the Teskey store here would stay at this site. Uh, but maybe change the footprint and bring in some, uh, housing up top, uh, apartment style housing up top. Uh, I think it's important to note that this would right zone the property. The current use of pet services really isn't allowed in C one. Now it predates the zoning, so it it was grandfathered in, if you will, but, um, an important note there. Uh, a bigger site than you think, about one point two, one point three acres. Um, I was surprised by that when I looked. Um, we just have concepts now for what, what would come forward as a site development plan. So we still have to do a site development plan on this. It's gonna be a rezoning at this point. Your future land use map and your, uh, your zoning map, uh, we have alignment here. So, the community commercial does allow the C one and the C two use. Uh, interesting, the C two use is, we sometimes worry about having housing in C two. But this is not strictly housing. It's retaining the commercial and bringing housing to the top. So we like to see that kinda compatible use of housing. So we like to see that kind of compatible use of housing where you you keep that commercial structure, at least at the base floor level. So again, consistency across the plan, a lot of consistency within the comprehensive plan as well. I think I want to note on this slide a couple of things, just as trend-wise, that that to me were interesting, so I'll just point them out to you. This this C two housing with commercial kind of going in is is really popping up in this neck of the woods. So if you just go across Spruce Hills Drive to the north and east, you have condos, townhomes, if you will, planned here. They're approved. They haven't come through yet, and of course, the the co-op housing here. So in that area, we're seeing that central city housing develop. I think that's healthy. That's gonna drive shoppers to your your central city retailers. Interesting trend I thought I'd kind of point out for you. Here's some concepts. Sorry for the gray outlines. This is their artwork, so I'll do my best to explain what you're seeing here. Again, very rough ideas right now, but probably moving the building to the west side of the of the lot, opening up that parking so it's more of a direct access as you come in. Wendy's is is here. Nothing changes. You can't really transport between Wendy's and this site. There's a curb and a level change. But looking at moving, taking down all the existing structures, moving them to the to the west side of the lot and providing more direct access for that parking, potentially having some residential up top and retail on the bottom, maybe Tuskegee's and another retailer perhaps. And some of that parking could be covered indoor. They currently park thirty as is, and it's tight in there. This would open up a lot more parking. We have a positive staff report. It's in your packet. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mark? Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mark, I saw in the P and Z minutes, their concern about the potential of tying up parking spaces for outdoor displays in seasonal times. Is there any need for us to add a condition to the rezoning that would prohibit or restrict in some way the use of parking spaces for outdoor displays?
Yeah, well, technically, you're, when businesses do that, they're underparking their business, and we don't do a lot of enforcement on it because it is, as you said, seasonal nature and usually temporary nature. We certainly could do that route. I would say it's more of a pet supply store than the the old Green Thumbers. You know, if you remember, it was a really popular location at one time. So they're doing less of the plant-based inventory, less of the mulch stuff. I think they're doing more pet supply stuff. Certainly, if that's a concern of the council, we can address it.
I'm happy to go either way. I just want your professional opinion.
Yeah, my my thought is, at a pet supply store, it's probably not quite the same, quite the same animal, no pun intended. So I would say you probably don't need to do that.
Okay. Other questions? Have you been in the Tuskegee's recently? Walk in and you hear those birds and dogs and fish, not too loud, but.
Not as loud.
I don't know if you want to be, you know, if you're not a dog person living upstairs from baby little doggies, you know, little puppies. Hey, whatever. He owns them both.
Think you would do your research, Your Honor.
I'll figure it out, right? All right. Anything else on this one? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Your Honor.
These will appear tomorrow as items ten and eleven. We look forward to your discussion on those items tomorrow. Okay, let's take a look at the consent agenda. Is there any item on consent for consideration? Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to move Consent I to the regular agenda, and I would so move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take up Consent I as a regular agenda item. You betcha. Any other consent agenda items? Anybody wants to discuss or ask questions about it this time? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that all consent items except item I remain for consent agenda consideration of our night.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll take up the consent agenda items other than I. I don't have anything to add to tomorrow night's agenda. Anybody from council have anything to add?
No, sir.
We can talk about Halloween parade and make sure we remind people of those details as we get going.
Early voting, Your Honor, tomorrow and Wednesday, I believe, at the library.
Perfect. Good for folks to know. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. We stay on adjourn. Good work, people. We'll see you tomorrow night.